Good morning, everybody. All right, November the 28th. Just a few days after Thanksgiving. I hope you all had plenty of good grub to eat because I know I did and now I need to go walk. A lot. About nine oh seven AM, November 28, 2023, regular meeting Liberty County Commissioners Court. Show we do have a form established. Fisher Barbowski is here. Fisher Arthur, Fisher Whitmire is here. And there's Nelson is with us on Zoom. Can you hear us okay, Leon? Okay, good deal. All right, so we have business for the court this morning. If y'all would all please rise for the start of the pledge and the dedication. And we face American flag together.
I'll be like a state in America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God.
And the most beautiful flag in the nation, state flag.
Our state has life. I pledge allegiance to the essence, one state, under God, one end.
If y'all wouldn't pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every day that you you get us up in the morning and send us on our way with a prayer and a promise. Promise to be with us and help us to guide us through each day. Please forgive us for our sins, Lord, when where we failed you. Lord, help us to look forward to the Advent season as it is upon us now. And remember the reason why we celebrate this season each and every year. Is we welcome again the celebration of the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Lord, please be with us. We go through this meeting. Help us to make decisions that help people to do the right thing because it is the right thing to do. Lord, please be with us all through the holiday season again. Please be with our men and women in uniform as they perform their duties abroad and at home. And Lord, please be with our first responders. They have plenty to do and Lord, I know it's sometimes a burden, sometimes it's overwhelming. But with your guidance and your grace and your mercy, everybody will get home safely. Again, thank you for each and every blessing that you give us. In Jesus' most precious name, we pray. Amen. Notices and proclamations this morning. I don't see that just blew across my desk. We didn't have anything, did we? Okay, public comment. Anybody got any comments to make? Sheriff, we just, nobody wants to talk to us today.
It's all right.
It's all right.
The chose to remain silent.
Yes, sir. Okay, declare conflicts of interest. David, you had number 12, 13, and 14. Okay. And Derek, if you'd make note of that, please. Okay. Consent agenda, next item up. Have y'all had the opportunity to review this consent agenda? And if so, what is the court's pleasure at this time? Dwayne, we haven't had, do we have any items? Nothing? Okay.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
Judge, Kim Mara's here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have one add-on if I can add that in. It's a payoff for vacation for Maryland to Norio for $121.94.
Maryland?
Tenorio.
I used to spell that last name.
T E N O R I O.
Okay, it's got a hook tone phonics got us here today, didn't it? Okay.
That's all. Yes, thank you.
I withdraw my original motion and make a new motion to approve the consent agenda with killed addition.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Greg. Second, I get Leon, you got that second, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second, Leon, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on down to regular agenda. Veteran Services from Ms. Webb. Ms. Webb, how are you doing this morning? Come on up and visit with us, please. This is a considered approved request to apply the 2024-25 Texas Veteran Commission TVC Grant Funds for Veterans Assistance. And we've done this before.
We have.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just came today with permission from the court to apply again and submit an application December the 4th. With the same amount of 50K for veterans with utilities, mortgage, and rent. So nothing has changed. So we're looking for new information. I'll call for the secret.
Make the motion with approve.
Motion Leon, second David to approve. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor? Likewise, that motion does carry. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Appreciate you. Eight point two from Commissioner Wilson. Consider approving our local agreement between Liberty County Precinct Four and the city of Keneffick. For all the obvious reasons that we always have in our local agreements. This is just a renewal, right, Leon?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
New work approved.
Second.
Motion Greg, second David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, eight point three is Commissioner Arthur, soon approve the reappointment of Brett Oddlet and Mark Neal and appoint Bill Wingfield to the SD number seven board. All these terms will begin January the 1st, 2024 and end December 31st, 2026. And Greg, I'm sure you talked to everybody and they're they're all up for serving.
Making motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. All in favor? Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight point four, consider to approve the annual donation of $10,000 to Dayton Senior Citizen Incorporated. Organization provides meals and activities to the senior citizens in Dayton and the surrounding community. Leon, you got anything to elaborate on that one? Is it running pretty smooth?
Yeah, yeah, they're doing okay. And this is a, it's an asset for these folks and it helps out greatly. So I make the motion with approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion Leon, second Bruce to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five from Mr. C. Consider and award RFP number 24-02 sprinkler system for supply building using ARPA funds. That's going to be the supply building behind the Harkeville building.
I wasn't paying attention. Did you go to number four?
Yeah.
I did? Okay. I wouldn't listen, so that's why you caught me by surprise here.
You look at Elko's new contractors, ain't it?
Yeah, it looks a little better than I thought. Okay, so as y'all know, we had to put a sprinkler system. In fact, we'd already awarded the bid to build the building over there at Harkeville Building. So we asked for a quote from the current builder and was shocked to find out it was going to be over $50,000 when we got the quote.
Yeah.
So we came back to court and asked for, to go out for bids for it. So here we have a bid on a wet system and a dry system. And I think it was decided we originally had to go with the wet system, right? It's a little bit cheaper.
Okay.
Anyway, so the, for the wet system, the bid to install it, supplier was saying labor installation was $70,850 compared to the original quote, which was $86,77. Sometimes it pays to go out for little competition, even though we only had Fornet, they were the only bidder on it. Nobody else bid. We sent it to three or four different companies. They suggest they have an alternative, alternative alarm panel for an extra $9,800. The original quote was 99.75. And I think y'all decided probably needs the alarm panel. Or remember, right? Yeah.
Okay.
So the total price on that would be $80,650, which is $15,402, less than the original quote.
Make a motion to approve bid number one.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve award the RFP number 2402.
And Harold, was they supposed to donate a building sometime this week?
When he brought the bid in, I think it was delivered to them, I think the last Tuesday maybe or the Tuesday, I forget number. So they should have that building now, but I'm not sure about when they're bringing it here.
Okay, we have motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't sit down yet. Harold, you got a bunch more to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, number eight, six. Consider and approve cessation of bids proposals for the renovation of the building at 1801 Trendy Street.
Okay, David Meadows, David Meadows asked me to put this on here. He, I think he'd gotten with the district attorney's office. And they told him whatever their their wants were for the building. He had a contractor come just to, we didn't get, hitting you a quote, we just to give him an idea. And they said, yeah, it would be well over 50,000 for what's needed. And I don't know what y'all have budget for that. What I put on here is the owner. We don't have a scope of work yet, but we get the scope of work. Y'all want to go ahead and bid it out?
Slaps a paint on the walls and open the door. Dwayne, is that pretty much what we had anticipated?
Yeah, I mean, we just got a demo map, some special projects here.
Yeah.
I'd wipe that up pretty quick.
That was a subtle warning, y'all.
Harold, what kind of specific renovations are we talking about?
You'd have to talk to David about that, but it's just total redo of everything, kitchen, bathrooms, you know, trillid floor paint. I don't have the specifics yet. It wasn't paid. I just wanted to get y'all's idea. Do you need to pursue this? Or you go get David, give the scope of work together?
I'd like a scope of work, honestly.
Yeah. Went to because basically I was thinking like, y'all, your paint, replace the carpet, fix up the one room for the grand jury to begin in. And that was about it.
Yeah.
No big renovations.
We got, we got other fish to fry with. What little we have in that town.
What, did Bruce indicate picks up the one room for the grand jury?
Yes.
Yes.
Just fix it up, Leon. That was all.
Yeah.
In other words, slap some paint on the walls, put some new carpet down and get the grand jury room gussed up a little bit, nothing big. But basically just the bare minimum to get in the building and use it. I mean, it's.
I'd like to see, I'd like David to give us the scope of work too, what we, what all we're looking at.
Yeah. When you, you give a contract carte blanche, we'll be here all day.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
I make the motion with table this.
Okay. Got a motion to table. Do I hear a second? Motion Leon, second Greg to table. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, if we just get up. Somebody to sit down with David and say, hey, we want paint, we want carpet, we want to fix up the grand jury room a little bit. And we live with the rest of it until we, our ship comes in.
Yeah, that's what I kind of figured. We need, we need that before we do anything anyway. But I just want to see how y'all wanted to proceed on that.
Okay, that'll work. Thank you so much. Eight point seven from Mr. C. Consider and approve quote for repair of sidewalks at 501 Palmer Street. Got some uneven sidewalks up that way.
Yeah, here's some, y'all want to look at them. There's some pictures. Evidently, yeah, evidently David said he's had a lot of complaints from WIC that people are falling or
Yeah, they don't.
tripping or whatever.
I agree.
So he had, he found two companies, this one, this generosity, I think is the name of it. Yeah, generosity and Ocean. Ocean said they cannot come out, even to give a quote till after December. These people gave a quote, they're out of Friendswood, I think. And said they could start like, do it in December, start like within a week or two. But anyway, just to fix the sidewalks, the quote was $9,468. And to replace the expansion joints with another 1977 as an alternative, you wanted to do that for had the total on her somewhere.
Bruce, do you recommend doing some of the size wood for expansion joints?
We're using that black carved stuff on the newer stuff that I've seen.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not a concrete professional, but.
Yeah.
My question is, are the sidewalks belong, are they property of Liberty County or is it the city of Liberty?
This is in the building itself, Leon.
Palmer, the inside doors.
Ah, okay, okay.
Yeah, they're ours. Yeah.
Yeah.
So 9,000?
468, I think, without the, without the expansion joints. And then the additional 1977, if you want to replace those.
Well, you defeat the purpose if you don't do some of these expansion joints, but I'd like it.
Yeah.
A consideration of materials on expansion joints. You know, wood, this Liberty County wood is not going to last all that long.
Yes. And they're filling, they're filling this with polyurethane, caulk, even their PVC gasket.
Yeah.
What it's saying here, so. I'm going to approve the 11,445.
Let's go back to that. Is that going to come with special projects? 11,000 dollars and 45.
We're going to get shot walking out here.
Either that or for long, we're going to end up with a suit if somebody's falling out there.
Well, 11,000 for peace of mind.
She's going to lawsuit.
Okay, you got a motion from Bruce. Do I hear a second?
I'll say yes.
Same from Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, eight. Mr. C. Consider and approve purchase of Ry Base from other sources. Right?
Precedent two is the only one that, as of right now, uses it. We, we usually, we always put it on road material bids. Usually we get it from Arcosa aggregates and usually they won't bid on it. I don't know why. But they buy it every year, but they never buy more than 50,000. So we never worry about it.
Yeah.
Kind of keep up with it as it goes. They have been selling it to us for 1750, I guess, square yard that comes out. And so this time they didn't bid again. Commissioner said he had talked to them. But our new bidder, Texas Concrete, did. And when you accepted the low bidder, they were the only bidder at that time, Modern Concrete. Their price to pick it up their plant, which I'm assumes in Beaumont is where their office is, and they're, they're in y'all's, our cousin's in your precinct. It's $45 to go pick it up.
So it's 17 to 45.
Yeah, they delivered the precinct to be $60.
Wait, buy it from there for $17 and something. And Greg, and Derek, Ryan. Now this company that out of Sour Lake. They go there and buy it $17 and sell it 1750, 45.
Exactly. So when we, when we do the bid documents for this, we always put a paragraph in there for these kinds of situations. And I wish I'd given Catherine a little earlier so she could look at it. It says we can purchase from other sources if it's for the benefit of the county. And I think the wording kind of gives us an out. And since we don't spend 50,000 anyway, it didn't really have to be bid. I was gonna see if Catherine agrees and just basically throw out the low bid from Modern Concrete. And if for some reason it looks like you're going to buy more than 50, which you haven't in 10 years or whatever, then we'll rebid it or whatever. But I mean, if it's ridiculous, pay 45, we get it for 17.
Catherine?
I agree with Harold. It's a quality. It's a vision.
So the other source, you say from other sources, that'll be.
It'll be Arcosa aggregates.
Okay. How you spell that?
Arcosa, A-R-C-O-S-A.
Okay. I was trying to help Darian out because she's going to go here and tap away.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, you got a motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve Arcosa aggregates as supplier. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, nine for Mr. C. Last one here, Harold.
Yeah.
Consider approve quote for installation of equipment at the radio tower using ARPA funds.
Okay, I had thought this was already been before, but that's definitely championship. She's been said, but I think what we're holding up on, we got a quote or still got a quote from A Electronics, who's I guess a subcontractor with Motorola. Yeah, so it's definitely called or contacted HGAC to make sure things. Well, negative quote back was a little bit more than the, a little less than 6,000 more than the original, but this is the, this is HGAC contract that this is on. So this is for the tower.
So it's through both towers. So we have the Moss Hill, Davis Hill Tower, which has been probably obsolete for a while on a VHF side. And then the new tower that's going in, that equipment will go on it. So the towers involve either antennas and repeaters. Now it'd be for the VHF side, which is a fireside.
Yeah.
And Billy and I are still talking about the 800 side of the new tower. Anyway, so this will get these towers up and running and licensed. Because we haven't had them licensed in numerous years as well. And matter of fact, the new tower that'll probably be a different subject. The new tower is going to have to be in our name. It's going to have to have either Liberty County or Liberty County, I don't know, or whatever. But it's going to have to have a name to it. So that's something you need to do. The, the, these are items that we can go against the ARPA funds to, to bring it up to date.
We had some money left over in that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We're still good right now.
Uh, one quick question while we're on the subject. We got it worked out with dispatch for tarkin and for Plum Grove.
Correct.
With this. Being a consideration.
So that's a separate subject, but this is going to help with that.
Because of the VHF side.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Also, I didn't put it on the, on the agenda, but I wanted to note that it's HGAC, HGAC contract RA 02-21. And we're a dog of mountain in the minutes. That way if we go back and look later, we, we know it was HGAC.
And how much more money was that going to be total?
Was 47?
47,134.
27 what?
47,134.86 cents.
Sheriff, that sound good?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Leon to approve. Any further discussion? Bill, here's a chance. Any further discussion? You good?
Good.
All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Number eight, 10 from Mussaladee. Over permits inspections, consider to approve the purchase of Open Gov software for the permitting and inspection department using Texas directive or direct. The initial cost of the software will be 34,823.33 with a one-time 27,340 software implementation fee. Now, this is what we've been talking about for a while.
Yes, yes.
It's a little bit better, more digestible.
Yes, absolutely. And they were willing to work with us, get our cost down. The implementation fee, we got way down because we can't cannot bring in historical data from what we have.
Right.
Everything we do is going to have to be under a manuality because they're just no intent. And this is Eric, and I'm not going to pronounce his last name because I'll slaughter it. And he is from Open Gov. So if you have any questions about the software.
So Eric, what's your last name?
Weber Mule.
Damn, you got that?
As you can see, I definitely have slaughtered, so.
Eric W. is just fine.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here. It's, Dwayne, we had the, we had the money in that account.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to take it out of y'all's account.
It's gonna, I have two items in my budget that will cover this. You not have to pull them anywhere else.
Okay.
And we'll just.
And this, this will get us, this will get us rocking a little bit faster.
It's looking at us rocking. And this is actually another step to getting into compliance with FEMA. I have one more with the other plan that I'm working on, fire department, the chief and his staff. And that'll be the last step in getting everything up to compliance with FEMA. Due to the changes in FEMA is not going to be able to just come out and, and help us anymore. We're basically going to be responsible for any, anything that happens.
Yeah.
So we'll have to be training volunteers and stuff.
I know they've been out quite often, you know, helping us bring along. And I do appreciate that. It
This, this software is really needed. What we have is very antiquated. We only have four licenses. So we have to take turns getting in and out of the software to be able to use it. I can't do recording like I need to do. The girls literally have to pull it manually, make copies and do.
But in this particular, we will be able to do that.
Yes, they'll, they'll be able to set it up however you need it. I've already given them spreadsheet on how, what our steps are. And he said it would be absolutely no problem.
I've been all for it. Just a matter of how to pay for it.
Right.
And it, we have a method and we appreciate your help too.
Absolutely, sir.
It, now we got a decision to make.
Web based software, so we don't have to buy any equipment.
Correct.
And the inspectors can work from out in the field. They can do their inspections on the software and immediately say it's fast fulfilled and they go over to the office and no risk.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second David to approve. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All righty, well, y'all go plug that program in and get rocking. Number eight, 11 from Permits Inspections. Consider and approve request from Entergy Texas to release bomb number 02223609. This bomb was for road use for nine miles of County Road 6243. And
I got with Commissioner Wilson to have him okay this. He said everything was completed and that it would be good to release.
Correct.
All right.
Make motion to approve.
Motion Leon.
It's already been made.
Oh, you did, did you?
And second.
And second.
Yeah, I'm kind of deaf in this here. Okay. Was that you made the motion, Bruce?
I made the motion, Greg said.
Okay. Motion from Bruce, second Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Likewise, no, it's a motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 12, Permits Inspections. Consider and approve Santa Fe Village Section Two construction plans, final drainage plans and final plat. This subdivision located in Precinct Three and has 168 lots covering 8.0, 8.104 acres and is for single family residents only. LJ Engineering letter of approval is attached to the packet. Linda, what else we have to say about this? Melinda, what else we have to say about this?
Yeah, this is.
What's your recommendation?
Yeah, this, this one, um, is just like the, the, uh, village one.
Yeah.
They're just expanding on it.
Making motion to approve.
Bruce, second from Greg to approve, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
You can tie.
Likewise, nays. And David, you were going to abstain on that incorrect?
Yes.
Okay. So we have three ayes. One abstain. Eric, you got that? Okay. All right, number thirteen. Permits inspections, consider and approve the variance request for Santa Fe Section Twenty. Attached is the Hardley Group request and drawings of the variance, LJ Engineering Letter of Approval is attached to the packet. Okay, Melinda?
This variance has to do with, um, the setbacks on the corners where the, um, half the cul-de-sac goes, and side yards, um, setbacks. They want them a little bit smaller on those corner lots. Uh, they want the setbacks to be the twenty-four instead of the twenty-five.
Sure.
What was that, Melinda?
It's around the, uh, the half, the corners of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Um, there's, uh, one, two, five lots on these corners, and they're just trying to do the, um, the setbacks a little smaller because of the way the, um, subdivision set, because it's done on like a half a cul-de-sac. They're just trying to.
Like a pie.
It's like a pie shaped property, so they're wanting the setbacks a little bit shorter, so it doesn't look like it's, uh, only big enough for a driveway.
Okay.
The, the map is in here, and it shows how they're supposed to be and what they're requesting, and it's really not much, much difference.
Okay, and LJ did, uh, approve.
Yes, LJ did approve it, yes, sir.
Okay.
I can motion to approve.
Yeah, motion from Bruce.
Okay.
Second from Greg. Uh, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, I've got, uh, three ayes, and that was, David, you had an abstain too. Okay. Got that, Derek?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, number fourteen, eight fourteen, uh, for purposes especially, consider approved Santa Fe Section Twenty construction plans, final drainage plans and final plat. This subdivision is located in precinct three and has seven hundred and forty-three lots covering a hundred fifty-eight point one nine eight acres, is for single family residents only. LJ Engineering Letter of Approval is attached to the packet. Okay, Melinda?
With the approval of the, uh, the variance that they requested, um, everything else appears to be, uh, at our requirements for Liberty County subdivisions, and, um, we're seeing, we're asking for approval.
Yeah.
Making motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. Thank you. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, they abstained, okay. Got three ayes. One abstain.
Please don't run away when we get done, so I can get some signatures from you all.
Got you. Okay. Uh, eight fifteen from, uh, County Attorney's Office, uh, consider and approve waiver and limit of liability signed by Triple S Tree Services, Holy Liberty County Harmless. The tree tree farm on County Road rights away in precinct four. Uh, Leon, y'all trimming some trees down there?
Yeah, what's happened? We have a, we had a request from a homeowner that is, uh, wanting to move a home in, and there's a couple of trees that are right up just pretty close to the edge of the roadway. Um, and the home was too wide uh, to take down that road because of trees. And so the, they have, uh, requested that they hire a, um, contractor to come in there and remove those trees. And haul off any, uh, existing, uh, trunks and limbs. And when we get out there and we looked at this situation, eventually, we're going to have to wind up cutting the trees anyway, because they're starting to lean, lean inward into the roadway.
Yeah.
You know, talking with Catherine and, we felt like, you know, I felt this is a good, it was a good proposition for us. And as long as, uh, you know, they, uh, submitted, uh, hold harmless agreements and stuff. In case they did get out there and tear something up, uh, uh, I, I'm going to make the motion we approve this.
Second.
Yeah, motion Leon, second from Bruce. To approve, is there any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight sixteen from, uh, County Attorney's Office. Consider and approve executed settlement agreement for cause number CV one nine one four eight nine five. Dalwally Hospitality Dayton, DBA Summit Inn versus City of Dayton and Liberty County. So Catherine?
Judge, if I may, I would ask that items sixteen through twenty, um, when you discuss an executive session.
Okay.
Go to the agenda.
So, uh, sixteen. Picking eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. All righty.
Making motion to go on the executive session.
Very good.
Motion for Bruce. Second from Leon.
Yeah.
Move these items into executive session, so any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is now nine forty-four. Take them to executive session. It's now twelve twenty-five PM, we're back in regular session. That executive session was held under Local Government Code, authority of Local Government Code five five one zero seven one. Uh, consultation with attorney. Local Government Code five five one point zero seven two, discussion of real property, and then five five one point zero eight seven, economic development issues. So we are in compliance there. Uh, items number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty were moved to executive session. We'll now move those back out of executive session into regular session. And we'll start with number sixteen. Uh, considering approved executed settlement agreement for cause number CV one nine one four eight nine five. Dalwally Hospitality Dayton, DBA Summit Inn versus City of Dayton and Liberty County. What is the court's, uh, pleasure this time?
To accept settlement.
Aye.
Got a motion from Bruce, second from Leon, to accept the settlement as stated. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to number seventeen. Um, discussion potential action shall occur pursuant to chapter three eighty-one of the Texas Local Government Code. Chapter three twelve, Texas Tax Code and other authority regarding the following matters. The presentation by Trinity River Solar, one LLC, which is the company regarding its one, uh, proposed solar energy electricity generating facility project be located in certain real property totaling approximately twenty-four hundred acres, more or less, and located in eastern Liberty County. Texas near US Highway ninety east and FM ten oh nine, therein. And to pending application for tax payment regarding the project, uh, B would be consideration of approval for the negotiations, if any, by Liberty County, Texas with said company regarding said project and application. And C, all related matters. Uh, what is the court's pleasure there?
Making motion to continue negotiations.
You got a motion from Bruce to continue negotiations.
Aye.
Second from Greg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Aye.
We got, uh, three ayes. One nay. Thanks, sir. That motion does carry. Number eighteen. Uh, discussion potential action shall occur pursuant to chapter three eighty-one of the Texas Local Government Code and other authority regarding the following matters. Presentation by Industrial Kilo Project LLC, the company regarding its proposed solar energy electricity generating facility project be located in certain real property totaling approximately one thousand sixty-nine acres, more or less, and located in southern Liberty County, Texas, near County Road four eighty-six, therein, and to pending application for an economic development agreement regarding the project B, consideration of approval of further negotiations, if any, by Liberty County, Texas with said company regarding said project and application, and C, all related matters. Again, what is the court's pleasure?
Making motion to continue the negotiation.
You got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Aye.
We have three ayes. One nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen. Consider and approve resolution letter from council to Liberty County Solar Project LLC formally requesting preliminary reimbursement for any land suitability testing of proposed donated land pursuant to the active economic development program agreement and access agreement executed by and between Liberty County and Liberty County Solar Project LLC. Uh, that's read just as it is. What is the court's pleasure?
Uh, I'll make the motion we approve with the exception that our council uh, continue negotiations with this, uh, Liberty County Solar Project.
Motion from Leon.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Man. Kind of getting dirty here, okay. Number twenty, consider and approve resolution authorizing Dr. Ramon Caraspio to appear and be deposed, Liberty County's corporate representative, and calls number twenty twenty dash six one seven six five dash MDL. Two, in the Arkema Incorporated litigation currently pending in the three hundred and thirty-third District Court of Harris County, Texas. Uh, we have a motion.
I make the motion we approve.
Second.
Motion from Leon, second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, wait there. We have a motion to adjourn from Bruce, a second from David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.